Ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Delta County Board of County Commissioners for April 1st, 2025. Please rise and join me in the Plague of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any additions for agenda today?
We will move item number seven, Board's Consideration and Possible Award for the Final Bid Tally of 2025 RFP-09, Asphalt and Emulsions, to the April 15th meeting.
Very good. Terry, anything? The agenda will stand as amended. Constituent time. Is there anybody from the audience like to visit with commissioners this morning?
Hi.
Good morning. Please sign in.
I'm Cindy Sorensen-Frengsen, Congresswoman.
Does that microphone on? Hey, Dave.
Um. So I received a letter from Everett. And, um. It was my understanding that I was grandfathered in, and I feel like it's a witch hunt from Mr., I can't remember his last name at the moment. And I just don't understand why all these different venues are being selected and targeted for. It just feels like you guys are trying to shut us down.
Could you give us some context here on what?
So I received a letter saying that I had potentially violated the land use code. And it was my understanding that I was grandfathered in. So I've asked for a letter from Cora. I know there's a couple other venues as well, Austin Fort and Sageview. And they have gotten their Cora letters. The document shows that us three are listed. The complaint is just three names listed. There's no reason for the murder. It's just like, it's a blank letter, and I'll be more than happy to send that to you. I'm having email problems at the moment, so I can print it. So I just don't understand what's going on. So that's number one. Number two, the aspect of shutting down natural medicine wellness centers in the valley, I do not understand the reason for that. You already have the letter written out, ready to be signed, and you're just now having the meeting today. So it seems like you should have the meeting first, after you've heard from your constituents, before you write the letter. Can you explain that to me?
We don't normally engage in back and forth during constituent time, Ms. Sorensen, but I'll give you some answers because you deserve them.
Thank you.
First of all, the land use code operates on a complaint-only system. Somebody has filed a complaint against these venues. Everett is doing his due diligence on those.
And so who was the complaint from?
I don't know.
So how could there be?
Those can be anonymous. At the request of the public, they wanted the complaint system to be anonymous.
So why are there three different venues?
Because that's the ones that had the complaint filed against them.
So one person is picking out pretty different venues. It sounds to me like this is a good old boy network to me.
There is nothing good old boy about this.
Well, what is it then?
We're just doing our due diligence. Okay. Second, on the natural medicine, we've already had one public hearing on it. I asked the county attorney, we asked the county attorney to do a draft resolution on a temporary moratorium. And that's what we'll be addressing in the public hearing today.
Okay.
And these are for licensed businesses only. These are not for personal or unlicensed venues.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And the natural medicine only concerns in our resolution today is the mushroom aspect of it. It's not acupuncture. If you're making dope out of goat's milk with healing properties, it doesn't attach to that. It's just about the mushrooms, this resolution.
Okay, it's not mushrooms. It's psilocybin if it's a medicine.
It's psilocybin, psilocin, ibogaine, mescaline, and dimethyltryptamine.
Right.
Those are the only things we're considering.
Okay. Well, it's not very clear, and you're in the post.
We are using the state's nomenclature to be legal.
So the state is coming up with the guidelines.
Okay, we know this.
Okay, well, I know this too, so I'm holding this as well. So it's, and so it's, and I don't know when you had your last meeting. I was out of the country for a month, so I don't, I think I missed it. So, and the first thing we thought about it was on a Facebook post that, that, it doesn't really matter. But so it's just, you know, I'm trying to help people who have trauma, who have had, you know, are military men who have had trauma, or women who have had abuse. And there are studies showing that psilocybin can help with those things with a doctor, a licensed professional. And the state says that there's four participants per one licensed official. So the state is mandating that, and we are following that. So I'm just, I'm just saying, so, you know, work with us.
We're going to hold this for the public hearing.
Okay, and when is that?
9:30.
9:30, okay.
It's on our agenda, 9:30.
Okay, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Sorensen. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online for constituent time?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Go ahead, Ms. Main.
Um, so I'm so sorry because I'm just.
Could you introduce yourself and where you live, please?
Sure. My name is Alicia Main. I live in Carbondale, but I am in Delta County at least four days a week for work. Um, I'm not sure if this is the comment time. I apologize. I got here a couple minutes late. So should I just?
This is constituent time. We're going to have a public hearing regarding the natural medicines at 9:30.
Okay, so I'm just, just to clarify that, so I understand it. Should I be commenting now, or should I be commenting at 9:30?
If your comments on the natural medicine potential moratorium, please wait till 9:30.
Okay, that's.
For everybody's on board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll close constituent time and go to Terry Stevenson. Good morning.
I have the minutes for my 18th, 2025 Board Committee Commissioners' regular meeting. Were there any changes, additions, or additions?
None.
I saw none here. Thank you.
Thank you. Also this morning, I have an application for a hotel and restaurant license for Kyle's Grill and Bar to be located at 2323 South Grand Mesa Drive in Cedar Ridge. I do have Mr. Kenny Moore here. If Kyle would you want to come up to the front in case the board has any questions, that would be great. You received in your packet my preliminary findings for the report. This
Exactly.
This is previously known as RJ Steakhouse. In the preliminary report, it indicated that there had been some remodeling done and added rooms to be rentals. I did a site inspection on March 7th, where Kyle took us through the bar and kitchen area, showing us where the licensed storage is going to be, which is out of the public area. Out of the preliminary report, do you have any questions? Any concerns?
Because this is a new license, we have to go through the whole process.
Exactly.
Anything, gentlemen?
No, I don't have any questions. Congratulations getting it back up and going.
Yeah, exactly. Ditto. Good on you.
My best.
Why move that we approve the hotel and restaurant license for Kyle's Grill and Bar located at 2323 South Grand Mesa Drive, Cedar Ridge, Colorado?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
My next item is to ratify the chairman's signature for a festival permit application for DRM Holdings Limited Doing Businesses as Mesa Winz Winery to be located at 29428 Highway 92 in Hotchkiss. This will be May 15th, 2025. Last week I brought, our last meeting, I brought to you a L.O.S. tasting room permit instead, and the state said that this would fall more into a festival, which will actually allow them to have nine permits in a 12-month period, so it expands their ability to have more versus the five with the sales room application. The information is exactly the same, just the different heading on the the permit. I did ask Chairman Coots to please rat, to sign the new permit so that we could get it done in a timely manner, because there is an eight-day turnaround for that. And so therefore today I'm asking for you to ratify his signature.
And this is item number four?
Yeah, we need to go back after this one.
Okay.
Oh, you were testing this one.
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
Did we pass?
You did.
So the request is we ratify the signature on an previously approved application.
I'll move that we allow the chairman to ratify the signature for the festive permit application for DRM Holdings located at 29428 Highway 92 in Hotchkiss.
I second that.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, to go back. So it is your consideration of a permit application for a report of change for Aquila Sellers LLC Retail Warehouse Storage Permit. This change is going to be located at 618 by the East 56th Street, Unit 4 in Commerce City, Colorado. So this is a little different than what we've seen before, but he does have storage over in Commerce City, and he's literally moving it from one storage unit right across to another storage unit, and it has to come, I don't know why, before you, because this, we have nothing to do with that storage unit. But the state asks that you give him permission to be able to do because his permit is actually out of Commerce City, so.
Questions?
No.
I move that we wow, the permit application and report of change for Aquila Sellers LLC Retail Warehouse Storage Permit change, which is located at 6185 East 56th Avenue, Unit 4, Commerce City, Colorado.
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So done. Anything else, Terry?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Commissioner Business, item number one, Board's Consideration Regarding the Request from the City of Delta to Have Hot Air Balloon Operations at Blakefield Airport is Needed for July 4th through the 6th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. The Board has granted this request last year when the City of Delta moved forward with the hot air balloon operations at Blakefield.
Kenny, question?
Does that mean the airport will be closed from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., I would presume? You fight on airplanes flying around, or you got balloons floating around?
That is coordinated with Blakefield, yes.
I guess the FFA puts out a
FAA?
Yeah.
FAA?
Not the farmers? Yeah, FAA.
Future Flyers of America.
Yeah, they're trying. They put out a report and a notice that planes stay away from there, so.
Well, I will make a motion that we where we call that. Make a motion that we grant the request from the City of Delta to have hot air balloon operations at Blakefield as needed for July 4th through July 6th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
Okay, next for your consideration is the resolution designating a project director and approving the grant agreement for Blakefield Airport for runway maintenance.
McCracken, you got any additions to this whole?
I do not. I can do a little description if you'd like.
Please do.
So before you use the grant award letter and resolution designating a project director and approving the grant agreement for Blakefield, it's a pavement, airfield pavement maintenance project. The grant amount is $350,000. Local match is $38,899. And the project director will be Scott Sheets. Do you have any questions?
Who is this Scott Sheets?
He's sitting to my right here.
Oh, okay. That guy.
Yeah, that guy right there.
Okay. No, I have.
This will be Resolution 09.
Okay. Why move that we approve the resolution designating a project director and approving the grant agreement for Blakefield Airport for runway maintenance? The resolution will be 09. And assigning Scott Sheets to the project manager, and the grant award is $350,000.
I will second the motions.
Any further discussions? Scott, you agree to this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, just clarify for Carrie that the resolution includes the next two items that are scanned into the agenda packet as well. Those should all be reported together. And they're reverent in your body. Go ahead, Ms. Riley.
Did you sign all three in?
Please, ma'am.
Okay. Board's Consideration to Ratify Signatures for the Comment Letter for Proposed CDBHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Landfill Methane Capture. This was during their public comment period. County engineer Tim McCracken reviewed the comments, drafted the comments, so if he has any addition, you can enter that in.
I don't have any additions.
Gentlemen, you all saw the letter. I think we're just ratifying the signature at this time.
Why move that we ratify signature for the comment letter for proposed Colorado Department of Public Health and Environmental Landfill Methane Capture?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next is consideration of the amended resolution for speed limit changes on portions of 3100 Road. County engineer Tim McCracken is here, if you have any questions.
Good morning, again. Before you is an amended resolution for the speed limit changes on portions of 3100 Road. The original resolution was recorded February 4th, 2025, at reception number 758288. After further review, there was, it was discovered that there was a clerical error in the resolution along with the map. The error was the address that was part of the map and the resolution. The distances in here are correct. They were correct the first time. It was just the address noting the location was incorrect. Do you have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended resolution. Number 202510.
R10.
R10. For the changes on portions of 3100 Road in regards to the speed limit.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So done.
Okay, next we will move into several bid awards. First, for your consideration, we do have Roden Bridge here, the foreman, John Allen, and Dave Howard, District 3 and 2, respectively, and the Works Director, Scott Sheets. For any recommendations, discussion for each of these. So the first one is 2025 RFP-07 for culvert pipe.
Who's got that one?
So two pages in this RFP. We would like to break this RFP up into two different groups and erode an award to two different companies. We would like to award light items one and two, which is the CMP, polycoated and non-polycoded, Ferguson Waterworks. We would like to award light items three and four, which is concrete pipe to Rinker Materials. And then light item five for polyethylene pipe, we would like to award to Ferguson Waterworks. And those are based on previous business with these companies, as well as obviously their bid price.
For the record, Ferguson Waterworks is out of Montrose, Rinker Materials is out of Grand Junction.
Because we're awarding these, possibly awarding these to separate bidders, let's do them by line item, and you can group them if you'd like. Any questions on this? We can all see the numbers here. Ferguson is much cheaper by far on several of these bid items. There's a lot of no bids from both Core and Main and Rinker on some of these.
So line item one and two, we'll go to
one and two, we would suggest going to Ferguson Waterworks.
As well as item five.
Yes, well, it's fine, yeah.
Okay. And three and four
would go to Rinker.
Rinker.
And let's make sure we read out the bid tally, the bid number there.
Are you ready for a motion now on the first one?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we grant all line items one, two, and five to Ferguson Waterworks out of Montrose, Colorado. First line item one for the amount of $154,715.77 for steel culvert pipe, line item two for silk culvert pipe, polycoded for $202,913.07 along with line item five for $41,061.24.
For the polyethylene cord.
For the polyethylene culvert pipe.
I second that.
Any other discussion here, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're on a roll there.
Great. And I will make a motion that we grant line items three and four to bidder number four, Rinker Materials out of Grand Junction, Colorado. Line item three for reinforced concrete pipe round with flared ends delivered for $221,485.60. Line item four for reinforced concrete pipe elliptical with flared ends delivered for $222,485.12.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
Okay, next for your consideration, final vote tally for 2025 RFP-08 mag chloride, one bid received in your packet.
One bid we received was from GMCO Corporation in Rifle. They're also in Grand Junction. Unit for mag chloride, and the price was $1.10 per gallon. And we'd like to award.
How much has mag chloride gone up over the years?
$0.97 a gallon last year, $1.10 this year. GMCO or new GMCO. GMCO combined with EnviroTech between last year and this year, so the two companies that generally would bid this product are now one.
So they had to increase the price?
I move that we award the final bid for magnesium chloride, 2025 RFP-08 to new GMCO LLC out of Rifle for $1.10 a gallon, the total price, $143,000.
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I am number seven, and again, as a reminder, final bid, 2025 RFP-09, has moved to the April 15th meeting for asphalt and emulsions. Move to Board's Consideration and Award Final Bid Tally for 2025 RFP-10 road paint yellow, three bids received.
Actually, there's a fourth, there's a second page to this one.
Thank you, one bid received.
Go ahead, John.
This one's pretty straightforward. We've done business with Alt Bates and Ennis Flint previously. And this year, Ennis Flint has a little bit for me. So that is our suggestion.
Any questions on this one, gentlemen?
I see none.
Low bid is Ennis Flint, so.
I will make a motion that we award bidder number three of 2025 RFP-10 to Ennis Flint out of Greensboro, North Carolina with the amount of $3,312.50.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, Board's Consideration and Award Final Bid Tally for 2025 RFP-11 gasoline and diesel fuel, one bid received.
Uh, one bid received goes from Reinhardt Oil, which we do business with currently. Rack price for unleaded gasoline was at $2.27 cents per gallon. Rack price for diesel fuel delivered was $2.36 per gallon. I would suggest.
Questions on this one? Make sure we get total tallies in here.
Why move that we award 2025 RFP-11 to Reinhardt Oil for unleaded gasoline, $2.27 a gallon, total price $68,124. For diesel fuel delivered, gallon price $2.36 a gallon for a total of $59350.
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, thank you for your hard work getting this stuff brought forward. Necessaire supplies.
Uh, final bid tally for 2025 RFP-12 tractor with 23 boom mower. Three bids received.
Uh, bidder number one and bidder number two, both bid John Deere tractors. Uh, bidder number one, bid a John Deere tractor with an Alamo mower. bidder number two, bid a John Deere tractor with a Diamond mower, that's just the brand. Uh, bidder number three, Western Implement, bid a Kubota tractor. And the name of the mower escapes me right at the moment, but large difference in price there. I mean, we would like to recommend going with bidder number two for the obvious reasons, and the biggest difference is the style of tractor. We specifically asked for an economy model. And that's what bidder number two bid. That's the main difference for the price. that's what bidder number two bid. That's, that's the main difference for the price.
Well, US tractor then have everything you need on it?
They will.
Function for the next twenty years here. They're expensive.
Guaranteed. No, no worries, I'm sure.
Glad to hear that. And it will be here in July.
It's what it says.
Okay.
The other two are a hundred and twenty days out, so. That's another good reason. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept bidder number two's, uh, US tractor and harvest for the twenty-three foot boom mower delivered to District Three in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you, John. I know you worked hard. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Go mow, 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 man.
Well, it's my pleasure to, to welcome Megan Kent and Chris Herman with Western Slope Outdoor Alliance. Would you please step forward? Thank you guys for being here. Could you tell us a little bit about WSOA and why we're here today?
Sure. Um, well, a lot of you around the table are familiar, have been to meetings and, uh, and all that sort of thing, but uh, for Commissioner Fuller, um, uh, overview and a, for Mike, a refresher, it's been a while since we've seen you at a, at a meeting, but um, West Slope Outdoors Alliance is one of now twenty-one regional partnerships around the state funded by Colorado Parks and Wildlife with, uh, part of their GOCO, uh, funding. And the idea of these regional partnerships is, um, is in a nutshell, balance. Making sure that, you know, as we grow the outdoor recreation economy, that we don't love things to death, to the detriment of agriculture and wildlife and all those things that, um, that make Colorado such a special place. So in, uh, twenty twenty-two, I got my arm twisted by Bureau of Land Management and Colorado Parks and Wildlife to get one of these things going over here for us. So uh, our, uh, our partnership is, um, is three counties, Montrose, Delta, and Mesa. And, uh, we spent, uh, the first year really trying to plan to plan, and the second year planning. And, uh, this, this third grant that we got, uh, enabled us to hire, um, Megan as a contractor to, to really, uh, turn the crank on this thing and, and make things happen. So to date, we've raised, uh, three hundred and fifty-five thousand through three of these CPW GOCO grants. And, um, the good news is that, um, they're gonna make a pot of money available, uh, through GOCO for the next five years for, uh, I think ten thousand a year is the, the number. We haven't seen the final, um, get grant guidelines, but, uh, for implementation. So we've built these twenty-one uh, uh, entities around the state that are, uh, working on projects. But we didn't have any new implementation money. And so rather than just putting another snout in the trough, we're gonna have a new, uh, a new bunch of money that these partnerships will be able to bring to, um, our local, our local projects. And, um, uh, Megan will say a little bit about projects here in, in a minute, but, um, we have nineteen different entities, plus three counties, plus, uh, the two federal land management agencies, BLM and Forest Service and CPW uh, at the, at the table for these meetings. So, you know, we have everybody from, uh, great old broads, uh, for wilderness, to, uh, Thunder Mountain Wheelers, and everybody in between. Um, Delta County folks, uh, we have the Grand Mesa Nordic Council representing non-motorized, non-mechanized recreation. Um, we have the Colorado Plateau Mountain Bike, uh, Association, which is the mechanized, non-motorized. We have Thunder Mountain Wheelers representing, uh, the ATV. Um, we just added a new member, um, Colin McKearon, um, Delta County Search and Rescue and a, and a motorcycle trail rider. Uh, we have, um, Ag, Janie Van Winkle, who I'm sure several of you know. Robbie has been at the table, um, representing the Ag voice. Um, the land trust is involved. Um, we have the West Slope Four Wheelers out of Montrose, Friends of the Young Compadre River, Audubon, on and on and on. So we have this great group of people, uh, including Wendell, that's been coming, uh, really i- in a dedicated way for, uh, for two years now. And we're finished, I think, with a lot of the, a lot of the planning and, and mission statements and vision statements and guiding documents and project evaluation matrices and all those things that we needed. And, you know, now we're actually moving on some, some projects, so.
Yeah, so as Chris mentioned, I came on, and I came on fairly recently, it was October last year. Um, just about to hit six months in this role. But it was because the group has reached this point where it's enough talking about what we want to do and time to actually start doing it. So looking at that balance between conservation and recreation, the way that our group identified we can be involved in that is clever stewardship, ensuring broad access, and then prioritizing sustainable resource management. Um, a lot of what that looks like, as Chris pointed out, we don't want to just be another group looking for money and taking money away from a group that already exists. So it's how these groups can come together, the projects they're already looking at, the projects they're already focusing on, and more or less find the win-wins and the overlaps, so we can use less resources to do more work. That's really, I would say, the meat of the group, is how we can, how we can collaboratively come together to get this work done, to ensure that, you know, the jeepers aren't losing their roads, but the wildlife still have protected habitats, having that balance between things and have everyone come to the table to do that. So right now, the projects we have on the ground, um, there are some that are more tangible than others, I would say. Uh, we have a couple of members who are really interested in checkered habitat. So what they are doing is they're going out, and right now it's an inventory of all of the guzzlers that are already on the landscape. I had to look up what a guzzler it was. You all may already know. But it's essentially like a water tank that, uh, in these areas that are wet part of the year and dry part of the year, or water longer, so you can stay habitat for longer. They're already out all over on public lands, but a lot of them have fallen into disrepair. The idea behind the project is to go out, see what shape they're in, and then fix them. Um, that's wildlife interest. But for example, having jeepers at the table, they have some resources that maybe some of our other wildlife oriented groups don't have, where it could be interesting, you know, hey, you're going for a trail ride, can you check in, take a couple of pictures of this for us, so that you're helping with that inventory? So truly looking for those overlaps and how we can use resources we already have differently. Um, another project we're doing right now is I just put out a survey. So we have a big survey project right now that one of them is just looking at the general community. You know, where are people going? What problems are they seeing? What changes are they seeing? What do they want to see? And that is so that we talk about our vision, what our group is doing. It's not just what that group of eighteen people in the organizations are doing, but hopefully reflecting the broader community vision. The other survey we're doing is more targeted. Um, it's, I guess anyone from the general community can see it, but one applied to most because it is targeted specifically at our agricultural producers. Um, and this is modeling after some other of these regional partnerships have done similar efforts. But it's looking at how recreation is impacting them. Um, I think that especially with grazing in public lands, we love, people are excited, they're going on a trail. Um, some of those existing uses sometimes are burying the brunt of it. So it is asking them about how often they have interactions with recreation, is how it's impacting their business. And we've left that both positive and negative, so we can have a better baseline understanding of what that looks like. And then hopefully come and build some solutions to that from what we learn. Um, so those are the kind of projects we have going right now. I think that as we continue, we'll get some of those on the ground, we'll continue to grow them.
The Boat Launch is a, I mean, that's a, that's a great one. Uh, that was, that was sort of the first project with a small P that, uh, that we did. Uh, a, a bunch of you were, were out there. I don't know, Lindsay, were you out there for that? They were doing the restoration and, and huddled in the parking lot after the, uh, after the planting was done. And talk came up about signage and, uh, you know, BLM said, well, we can print them, and Wendell said, we can do this, and the land trust said we could do that. In about five minutes there, they had the whole thing figured out and, and mapped out. It would have taken months of meetings to get that done. And I think that's one of the biggest benefits of getting all these folks together is the relationships that we're building. Ours is not the room where we butt heads. There are plenty of rooms where we can butt heads. Ours is the room where we work on the things that we agree on. And we're building relationships that might make the head butting a little less severe in some of these, in some of these other rooms. So uh, we're, we're excited that, uh, Delta County is part of this. And we're excited to have Megan on board and really looking forward to this GOCO funding to put some gas in the tank and, and really get some, some projects going. Questions? And why don't you have a handout that you could share with the commissioners? You know, some copies of that.
Several years ago, when this was proposed and um, Montrose, Mesa, and Delta Counties became involved, for me, it was one, managing the impact of recreation on the landscape, and two, minimizing conflict, both with our ag producers and the others on, on a public land. So Megan, tell me a little bit about the logistics for your survey. How do we get this back and forth? And when is it, when do you want to finish up?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, any help that we can get in having this survey reach more people, I would greatly appreciate. Um, we do have social flyers. If anyone is interested in looking at flyer, putting it up anywhere, social media would be an awesome place to share this. Uh, I wanted to ask you. Oh, yeah.
I was, I wanted to wait till.
Good.
Yeah, um, and I would say with the community survey, I'm sure on social media, I think that one had grown up reach, anyone could take it. That one's a little bit easier for us to get out. The ag producing one's a little bit harder for us to reach. Uh, Janie Van Winkle is helping with that effort, but especially if you know any producers and you have a personal relationship with them, sharing them, or sharing this with them would be of help to us. Cause we do want to hear from all the voices. Um, and it's not a long survey. I think the ag producer survey, it's gonna take less than ten minutes to complete. Community survey is a little bit longer, it might be fifteen minutes. Um, but just that ten minutes at there at times that we know that we're capturing everyone's voices that we can, could be huge help.
Are you four opening some of the trails that the BLM and Forest Service have closed? Opening them back up that traditionally been open, but now have been closed for a few years? Would you be agreeable to that?
That, that's not, not really the, not really the issue that's in airstrike zone. So, you know, travel, travel management planning is gonna go on separate from this. You know, we, we want to find those places where we agree that gosh, this existing trail is impacting wildlife, and so we need to reroute it, or it, it needs to be worked on so that it's not impacting the stream crossing or, or that sort of thing. So so the back and forth over whether it's this or whether it's that is, is we're, we're trying to stay out of those kinds of things so that we can stay focused on those productive places that we agree on to work together.
So you guys are, are you registered as a, as a nonprofit? Or how are you registered? Cause I know you're not a a government agency, cause I heard you say, Megan, that you wanted to get more done with less money, so that excludes you from the government.
We're not a, we're not a nonprofit, uh, at this point. We made the conscious decision year, year and a half ago, that that would just be too much to bite off, to get a nonprofit organized and a board and all the forms and that sort of thing. So, uh, we operate u- under the fiscal agency. For the first two years, it was Colorado Canyons Association, which is an organization I just retired from. Robbie was on the board for six years. The fiscal agent now is the Outdoor Recreation Coalition. And, uh, so the, the grants go to them and Megan sends them the invoices and they pay the bills.
Gotcha.
Someday, uh, you know, if, if this grows as we anticipate, I, I could see us being a, a five oh one C three down the road, or, you know, part of some umbrella five oh one C three structure, but right at the minute, we're, we're just sort of a loose assemblage.
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty good. I've been spending much more time in, in Delta County since I retired.
Good. This is the last best place.
Gonison, Gonison Gorges. I was never allowed to say which of the three national conservation areas was my favorite, cause I had to, you know, I had to show the love for all of them, but it really is Gonison Gorges. That really is my favorite place to, to view, so.
Well, we will get the, uh, survey push out on our social media site. Lindsay, if you would do that, please. And I can coordinate with you. Um, for Delta County's sake, I would ask our department heads to take a good look at this and, and see if they can, uh, complete one. Cause it's a good cross-section of the county also. And encourage our public.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Chris, Megan, thank you for making the trip.
Thank you all.
That is gonna bring us to Lindsay and our BOCC schedule.
Shave with representation on my computer. Love that group. Okay, um, I want to make a couple of special announcements. Um, we do have Division for Measurements, rule stakeholder meetings. The Colorado Division of Water Resources will be holding four stakeholder meetings, discuss the proposed measurement goals in Division Four. The meetings will be held both in person and online. Below is a list of the meetings planned, their locations. So we have April thirtieth, five of Bill Hill's Recreation and Art, yeah. And I will post these alone, let's say. May first, um, at six PM, the location is the upper Gonison River Water Conservancy District. That is at two ten West Spencer and Devonson in the conference room. May sixth, Lone Town Library at six PM, that's location in Lone Town Library at fourteen fifty-five Penguin Street in Norwood, Colorado. There is also video call information for all these meetings that I will. May seventh, Montrose County Event Center at six PM. Location is at one zero three six North Seventh Avenue in Montrose. So that is, again, the public notice for Division Four Measurement Rules Stakeholder. I'd also like to announce Public Health Week. We would like you to join us for Public Health Week. It starts here. Delta County Public Health has decided to adopt Public Health Week as a community one. And you are invited to be a part of it. It starts here. Public health starts with all of us. It's the small choices we make each day. The environment we create at home and the ways we support one another that shapes healthier, stronger communities. Where we live, work, and play all impact our well-being, and together we can make a lasting difference. The kickoff walk where is in front of the Public Health Building. Um, if you don't know where that's at, it is, um, on the campus here at Vice Street. When is April seventh at noon? Bring your walking shoes, your friends, and your commitment to a healthier Delta County. You can even form teams, dress up, or challenge your department, friends, or colleagues to join in the fun. Let's take the first step. Literally a figure to play towards a healthier future. Begins with all of us. So again, this will be on our website, on our social media pages. Um, and we will, you know, push more information about that. But again, it's April seventh afternoon in front of the public. So now I'll start with the commissioners' calendars for April. Happy Fools Day. Um, we have the Florida County Commissioners meeting for today at nine thirty PM, or nine thirty AM, we have the, um, the, excuse me, um, public meeting for the, um, Public meeting for the moratorium. At 1:00 to 3:00 PM, we have the Commissioner of Work session, the West Region Fire Council. That's here at Vice 60 Dot Street. Today at, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we have the Republican Party meeting at the surface Creek Community Church. Thursday, April 3rd, 8:30 to 10:00 AM, the agency legislative call on Zoom. Thursday, April 10th, 8:30 to 10:00 AM, another agency legislative call is on Zoom. Monday, April 14th, 4:00 to 5:30 PM, is a one Delta County Board meeting here at Vice 60 Dot Street. Thursday, April 15th, excuse me, Tuesday, April 15th, 8:30 to 12:00 PM, is another Board of County Commissioners regular scheduled meeting here at Vice 60 Dot Street. Tuesday, April 15th, 1:30 to 3:30 is a work session, the Roden Bridge here at Vice 60 Dot Street. Tuesday, April 15th, 3:30 to 5:00 PM, is a Board of Health Board meeting. Thursday, April 17th, 8:30 to 10:00 AM, agency legislative call. Tuesday, April 22nd, 10 to 12:00 PM, is pre-trial and diversion work session here at Vice 60 Dot Street. Wednesday, April 23rd, 9:00 to 1:30 PM, agency alignment meeting board meeting at Ground Valley Recreation Center. Wednesday, April 23rd, 3:00 to 6:00 PM, Fourth Annual Champions for Children's Fair, it's a human services. Thursday, April 24th, 8:00 to 10:00 AM, is an agency legislative call at the Vice 60 Dot Street. And Monday, April 28th, 4:00 to 5:30 PM, is a one Delta County.
What was the 28th?
The 28th is Monday, 4:00 to 5:30, one Delta County Board meeting.
Okay.
And on the 29th, we have a public hearing on the W. Butz landfill. And municipal quarterly, is that the 30th?
It is in Peonya.
What time is the landfill meeting?
8:30.
That's here?
Yes.
We're not going to do a field trip at the landfill?
That's your call.
This is for the certificate of designation consideration.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
It's eight thirty, right?
I haven't had.
I don't have anything here.
Lindsay, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. I got a few minutes here. I'm going to go through the jail reports. Jail, Delta County Sheriff's Department jail report for Monday, March 24th, 2025. Male inmates, 29. Female inmates, seven. Male inmates, five. Department of Corrections, female inmates, Department of Corrections, three, for a total of 44. The average daily inmate population for the week of March 17th through 24th was 50.09. A report for Monday, March 31st, 2025, male inmates, county jail, 33. Female inmates, county jail, six. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, and female inmates, Department of Corrections, one, for a total of 43. Average daily inmate population for the week of March 24th through 31st was 49.91. Is there any other business to come for the board?
I have none.
Carrie?
No.
We've got about seven, eight minutes. We are going to recess until 9:30. At that point, we'll do a public hearing regarding a temporary moratorium on natural medicines. That should be it. Thank you.
Well, Lindsay's got an alarm when somebody's in waiting.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and get started, reopen the Moore County Commissioners' meeting. This will be a public hearing. I want to say welcome and thank you, everybody, for being here and being online. I apologize for the confusion on social media regarding this issue. Delta County was following the state's nomenclature for how this was identified for this public hearing. This ambiguity is likely why Proposition 122 passed in 22 and brought into statute by SB 23290. Today's discussion is only about the licensed use of psilocybin, psilocyn, ibogaine, mescaline, and dimethyltryptamine, which includes cultivation, processing, distribution, and healing centers associated with those products. This does not any, include any unlicensed or personal use of those psychedelics. Personal and unlicensed use to those products is strictly permitted in SB 23290. Nor does this discussion include acupuncture, vitamins, soaps, tinctures, or other natural healing centers, yoga studios, or the myriad of other naturally occurring remedies. Again, we are using the state of Colorado nomenclature referencing these products, and it is unclear sometimes. So the ground rules for today's hearing. If you wish to speak, make sure you sign in or raise your hand. Lindsay will call on you. We will give you three minutes. Lindsay will be in the timer. She'll tell you when one minute is left. We encourage everybody to write, to supply written comments, particularly when it comes to the specifics about how these psychedelics are regulated in our land use code. Speakers must address the board, introduce yourself and where you live for a starting. And if there is duplication in comments, just say you agree with the previous speaker on that particular matter. Again, this is for, only for natural medicines as identified by the state of Colorado. Psilocybin, psilocyn, ibogaine, mescaline, and dimethyltryptamine. So today's discussion will be a consideration of a temporary moratorium on applications, establishment, or operations of natural medicine businesses, facilities, and healing centers. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the, let me find out, any, any staff have anything to say here?
Commissioner, thank you. I would just also remind everyone that the the purpose of any proposed temporary moratorium is to give the county, the planning commission, the planning staff is, and then ultimately the Board of County Commissioners, adequate time to develop regulations that would then be an amendment to the land use code. And so that's the, that's, that's why a temporary moratorium is even proposed at all or, or to be considered.
Thank you, John. Anything else before we open the public hearing? Have you got the sign in sheet? So again, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll start with those in the room first. Cindy Sorensen, please join us.
Cindy Sorensen, Zins and Gardens. And I was considering possibly opening up a psilocybin center. Well, that, that's my long-term goal. So my question is, why is Delta County more informed than the state? Why is Delta County hesitant to support psilocybin to help people get over traumatic stress?
Can you speak louder, please?
Get it on Cindy.
That just pushed that button.
Okay. Should I start over?
Pull a little closer to you.
Should I start over?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll start over with you.
So my name is Cindy Sorensen. I'm owner of Zins and Gardens, and I'm considering doing psilocybin healing retreats on my property at some point in the time. So my question is, why is Delta County more informed than the state? There's a hundred-page document out there, and I'm curious if you guys have read that document. Why is Delta County hesitant? Why not get behind this and support it? I'm curious if you've actually read the document from the state.
Yes, go ahead though.
Okay. What does a six-month moratorium do to prepare Delta County to support these healing centers? Or is it just to shut down the opportunity to help people? So those are, those are my main questions. There's a lot of studies out there that show that psilocybin and the different modalities that you mentioned can really help people get over trauma, especially military. For me, I'm dealing more with women issues and trying to help women get past trauma, deep trauma from. Well, we'll just leave it at that. So to me, we should be helping support this in our county. We could be leaders in the state versus being afraid and not supporting something that can help people. So that's, that, that's my main emphasis. Let's help people. Let's not be afraid. So.
Thank you. And I encourage you to submit your comments.
I will. I will. And then also, you know, I grew hemp for five years and I have seen how hemp has helped people in overcome stress and anxiety and inflammation and all different, all different aspects. Mushroom is a natural healer as well. And let's embrace natural healing versus pharmaceuticals. Let's, let's, we have a benzoid problem in this country. Why not help get past that and use other sources to help people? Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being here. Next is Caroline. Is it McManon?
McMahon.
McMahon. Good morning.
Thank you. So my name is Caroline McMahon. I'm a resident of Delta County and a practicing mental health professional in Delta County. And I've completed extensive training as a psychedelic practitioner in order to apply for state licensure as a clinical facilitator. I'd like to present the following as to why Delta County should not place a moratorium on natural medicine healing centers and to make a case in favor of permitting psilocybin assisted therapy in Delta County. Traditional mental health treatments, including antidepressants and talk therapy, have high failure rates for individuals suffering from treatment-resistant depression, PTSD, and anxiety disorders. Recent research on psilocybin-assisted therapy has demonstrated its potential to produce profound, long-lasting healing, often after just a few sessions. By allowing natural medicine healing centers, Delta County residents who are interested in alternative treatment options could have access to evidence-based FDA-designated breakthrough therapies for conditions that are currently underserved by conventional medicine. Psilocybin, the active compound in psychedelic mushrooms, has been extensively studied at major research institutions. And findings consistently demonstrate that psilocybin therapy can lead to significant and lasting reductions in PTSD, depression, and anxiety. The relationship between mental health and chronic illness is bidirectional, meaning that chronic illness often leads to poor mental health and poor mental health in turn increases the risk of developing chronic diseases. Research shows that psychological distress contributes to the onset, progression, and severity of chronic illness, making it essential to treat mental health conditions as part of a comprehensive healthcare strategy. Not only is there potential to impact the downstream sequelae of poor mental health, additionally, emerging research suggests that psilocybin-assisted therapy may help individuals who currently suffer from chronic illness by reducing inflammation, improving emotional regulation, and enhancing overall well-being. Psilocybin has been found to reduce neuroinflammation, reduce the intensity of chronic pain, and psilocybin therapy can help individuals with chronic illnesses reframe their perception of pain and suffering, reducing emotional distress. Psilocybin has been shown to impact treatment-resistant depression, PTSD, trauma-related disorders, and end-of-life anxiety for, and, excuse me, end-of-life anxiety and existential distress related to patients that are struggling with cancer and other terminal illness. Just trying not to take too long. Psilocybin therapy has also been shown to help with supporting veterans and mental health treatments. Colorado is one of the highest veteran suicide rates in the United States, and traditional medicine health services have failed to meet the needs of many veterans. Research shows that psilocybin-assisted therapy can particularly, is, can be particularly effective for veterans struggling with PTSD, depression, and suicidality. That's my time. Okay. Well, I'm really hopeful that you guys have heard the little bit that I've been able to share. Thank you so much for your time. And I can submit the rest of this.
Would you please?
For reading, yes.
And if anything else comes, you please submit it in writing.
Okay, I'll do. Thank you. I'm going to submit that and I can forward it.
Is that, would you like to provide that written comment? Thank you. Cindy, you signed up again. Would you like to speak again? Okay. You signed up twice.
Well, I was kind of on the first to the county commissioner meeting, and then the second time was with the psilocybin.
Anne Stinson.
Oh, so in regards.
I'm up there, so the microphone, okay?
And regardless of the land use codes, you know, a psilocybin retreat center, I don't think would impact any, in any phase possible for people coming to properties to have a retreat. You're talking eight people max, eight people. So I, I don't think it has any impact whatsoever for land, land use codes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anne Stinson.
Good morning. I'm Anne Stinson, and I've lived here for more than, now more than half my life, which blows my mind.
What's your address for the record?
Oh, Delta. I live in Delta, up on Garnet Mesa. And we've heard eloquently from the business side why the moratorium is not a good idea for the county. And eloquently from the scientific medical side why it's not a good idea for Delta County. And I'm just a citizen. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a business owner who wants to say, this isn't something that needs to be regulated. This isn't, this is overreach in terms of, it, it fits inside the state law that these businesses open, and that's adequate. That should be adequate for Delta County. We don't need to regulate it further. We don't need to close the fences in. And that's all I want to say is this is, there's so much more that could be regulated in our time and money spent on this is. There's, you don't need six months to say, oh, it's okay for people to run these businesses. Just let them happen. That's all I have to say. And I have nothing written because I'm too old to do my homework anymore. I'm sorry.
Thank you for joining us today. Marlene Nieremberger.
Oh, pass. I didn't understand the agenda fully. I thought it was other things, not just zeroing on psilocybin.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody online? Lindsay?
Yes, Sally O.
Sally O, please welcome. Please identify yourself and give us where you live.
Hi, my name's Sally. I live in Peonya. And I can't get my speaker or my.
What's your name?
Video. I can't get my video to work, my camera. Sally Owen, I live in Peonya.
Thank you.
Okay. I have two questions and then a short statement. My first question is, with any of these things, is what is the ultimate goal of this moratorium? Or what is the purpose of it? The second question is, what will it do to benefit the residents of Delta County? And me, you know, as a private person, as far as traffic or, you know, anything like that, hotels or people traveling or a destination. And then my statement is this, and then I'll end, is if you don't provide a safe place and assistance as in a professional person to help you when you are doing a psilocybin or any other of the psychedelics that you mentioned. If you don't supply that safe place, that's called set and setting. A lot of people are just going to do it anyway, and I call them rogue, do-it-yourselfers. They're going to just go out and do it. So what would the consequences of that be to your law enforcement agents that are then going to be required to deal with the problems? Because these people are going to be wandering the streets or, you know, having these problems. If you supply a safe place, they can go there like this Zen Zen place and have a nice retreat and have. and have other people there, and they can do self counseling to each other. So I end my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Next, Lindsay. Anybody?
Is there anybody else online that would like to speak?
Did Alicia Mine from Carmadale, does she stick around?
Please raise your hand and have Lindsay call on you before addressing the board.
Okay, well, spring mentality. You can, yeah, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you so much for calling this hearing. I didn't know I was going to have a chance to speak, so I will prepare a written statement if I can and submit that via mail tomorrow.
What is your name?
Can you identify yourself and?
Sorry about that. Elizabeth Evans. I live at 40662 German Creek Drive in Peonia, Colorado. I'm also a wellness business owner. I do not offer psychedelic services. But I do think it is one of the best healing modalities that we can offer to people who are suffering with mental health issues. I myself am someone who, due to my past, have suffered with pretty intense emotional issues. I have PTSD. I'm also a vet. I have PTSD from my time in service. I also have complex PTSD from how I grew up. I have done hours and hours, years and years of therapy. I have, I also teach healing modalities to people, and yet, for me, being able to take a, an assisted journey where it was meant to be a sacred ceremony, and I get it, we can be afraid of something that feels like it's voodoo or witchcraft. But I will say that this is a case of, of us calling something that is evil, good, that would be the antidepressants that people are addicted to that are affecting their health. And I'm sorry, I don't have any medical studies to speak from. I'm going to speak to you passionately from my heart and my own experience. But you can, there are so many studies. The VA has studied the use of psilocybin extensively. And because they're a huge bureaucratic organization, they do not yet pay for it. But that will be coming for vets because it is something that's made a huge difference for our combat veterans who have tried everything. They've had every type of, of treatment. And it wasn't until they were started to do an assisted psilocybin journey that they were actually given what they need. So let's not call things that are evil, good, and let's not call things that are good, evil. I think this is a great opportunity for us to educate everyone in the county as to what this really is because I have friends who, when they found out that I was going to do a journey, assisted with counselors, with a whole process where I was held and I was able to experience deep, profound healing. They were concerned because of a bad trip that they had taken in their twenties or in college. And so there is a stigma that we have a chance as a county to overcome through education. And this is something that offers great healing to our community.
We're, we're out of time on this one. Would you please submit written comments?
Absolutely. And do I just send that to the courthouse care of the county commissioners? What's the address for that?
I mean, to the planning department at 560 Dodge Street.
Thank you so much.
The planning department email is on our website as well.
Would you let them know when they have one minute left? Is there any others?
Yes. Janine?
Janine, would you please introduce yourself and where you live, please?
Hi, my name is Janine, and I live in Peonia.
Could you give us your last name, please?
Janine Pritt.
Thank you.
I also was unaware of this meeting until the last minute, so I will write something up and send it in. I am a 57-year-old woman who developed PTSD late in life and was desperate for help. I do not drink, smoke, do drugs. I'm a Christian. I go to church. But it pushed me to try two different psilocybin journeys with a therapist to deal with some of the traumas that I was dealing with, with absolutely amazing effects. So I do think there needs to be more understanding. This was highly studied through the 50s and 70s, and I'm glad people are going to be able to get this help again. I am curious, why for the more, more, matory, I'm sorry. How many applicants have you had so far? I've gone over the state, and I know they've only had about five applicants for facilities to grow, none in Delta County. I know they've had a couple applicants for the different phases of this. And I know that the application is insanely tight and over the top and crosses every T and dots every I. So I'm curious if somebody were to go through that extensive application, I think they even track all of your money, they track everything. What would be the fear then of having something in Delta County? It also looks like they're trying to spread this out across the state so that there isn't a concentrated area. So it seems like it would be smart for Delta County to get on board sooner than later to see how they would implement this in a safe way. I do not think psilocybin, I do not think psilocybin done properly with the proper set and setting with trained facilitators is only going to help this county. It takes one to three sessions for an alcoholic to not be an alcoholic. It takes one to three sessions for PTSD to be gone. I know firsthand what it can do for PTSD and that it can heal channels in your brain and open up your proper processing. And Delta County is a county that has a lot of people who could benefit from this type of therapy. I think you would actually see positive change, not negative, in the county. Thank you for your time. I'll write something more scientific up. I was not prepared, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody else want to speak to the commissioners? Oh, sorry.
Last one.
Uh, passion meter. You can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Melissa Brady. I live in Peonia. And I want to say I absolutely support the use of psilocybin for healing all the mental illness that we have in our, in humanity, in Delta County. And say thanks to everyone who's shown up, been brave enough to show up, and also show their support. And I'm kind of assuming that you guys have read some of the studies. Do you answer questions? Have you?
No, this is public, public hearing. This is time for you to address the commissioners.
Okay. So I just would like to say that I'm in support, and I am really curious why you would say no when Delta County is one of the poorest counties in Colorado. And here you have these beautiful people coming forward and wanting to help others. So why would you say no? And it seems like it's causing unnecessary suffering in the language and how it can affect other practitioners in healing. Our medical system really could use more embrace for the natural world, where all the pharmaceuticals come from in the first place. So this is a path back to wholeness. And so I'm just really curious where the three of you are coming from and why you would slow this down, why you would stop it. And I hope to see you do good things in helping manifest a supported, wonderful, clear path forward to heal all the mental illness, and in fact, try it yourselves. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nierenberger, you earlier declined to speak. Would you wish to speak now?
I thank you for the opportunity. I haven't checked into this topic specifically. I do know there's.
If you're going to speak, you need to come up. So you are going to speak. Please introduce yourself and where you live.
Marlene Nierenberger from Peonia. I, I think I'll pass.
Thank you.
But thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. So we're going to close the public hearing. We appreciate everybody's comments. Please do provide written comments at your earliest opportunity. We will take whatever we heard today into consideration. The next part of this business for us today is considering a resolution to impose a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for the establishment of any business that cultivates, processes, or dispenses natural medicines in the establishment of any business, occupation, or operation of a healing center associated with it. And again, this is for licensed businesses only. This does not affect unlicensed or personal use of any of these following substances: psilocybin, psilocin, ibogaine, mescaline, and dimethyltryptamine. Gentlemen, previously, we had a work session which the planning commission provided us with some potential additions to our land use code. In particular, some of the things they considered would be setbacks from a daycare or school as measured as outlined in the CRS, a transportation management plan, a, no natural medicine businesses operated as a home business, and no natural medicine businesses shall have a hardwired communication system. In addition, the hazardous substance used in the manufacture of the, of those substances was considered. The one thing that wasn't considered was any hours of operation. I'd like to open this up for discussion amongst the three of us and questions we may have for staff.
Well, I think that the reason we have the moratorium is to try to get some more guidance from the state. You can grow mushrooms on a 12 by 12 plot of land, but then once they're cultivated, says there's no legal limit to the amount that can be in their possession. But then it goes on to say 14 grams, and they consider anything over 14 grams the intent to sell. Well, that needs to be stated from the state exactly how they're going to police that. Some of the comments from the people today also about, we're not against this process, which is just that we need to make sure that first responders can respond to the addresses and know where they're at. You can't have them in a private residence. So does that mean you have to build a new building on your property to have the experience there? Hours of operations? Heard some stories about they might be doing something at this one house, say at midnight, you can hear them hooping, hollering, and carrying on. Yeah, that's what they said.
That's a party. That's not a, that's not a.
Please, please, this is, this is commissioner time.
And then how is that going to impact your neighbors, you know? The road situation, have you got good access to it? What about water? The people that are overseeing the experience, what, what knowledge do they have? What schooling do they have to be able to tell if you're having a bad experience? How do they help you come out of that bad experience? So as far as classifying it as an evil practice or an evil substance, that's not me. And as far as overreach, this is already from the state that the public, the voters voted in Proposition 122 two years ago. And it's just now the state's coming out with this, and we just need to make sure for the public safety and for the people that are using this type of substance, that they're safe, that they can handle it and then go about and be a productive citizen. But it just gives us time to get these questions answered and to be able to put it in writing so everybody knows what is expected of them. How clean is the place? You can't sell mushrooms. So what are you actually selling then?
Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to follow that same guideline that Mike was talking about. This was handed to us by the state legislature. This was nothing that the counties weren't looking for, the municipalities weren't looking for. This was regulation that was handed to us. And in our opinion, it's time that we step back and we actually look at this in a closer light. So this moratorium is temporary. I think that needs to be completely understood. We're not throwing this out with, with, with the baby, with bathwater. We're simply asking for more time here. And six months, I don't think is out of the question. It could be sooner than quick six months for that matter. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for written comments, for more hearings, for public comment to come in. It's going to give us more time to look at this and how we actually want this to land. There's just way too many questions that remain unanswered to, for us to move forward at this point. And so this is simply buying time. And if you read the, the resolution, it's right in there. You know, we do not have currently regulations addressing healing centers, and we're just simply asking for a amount of time to thoroughly review such regulations to determine what, if any additional regulations can or need to be adopted by this county. And so I don't think that's unreasonable. I don't think that's unfair in any way. And we are going to continue pursuing this. We're not going to just shove this to the back burner and wait and see what happens. This is going to be, this is going to be discussed. This is going to be on the front burner. And so the six months, I don't think is anywhere out of line with what we're asking, so.
In 2022, Proposition 122 became on the state ballot. I'm going to read most of it. Proposition 122, access to natural psychedelic substances. And that is, that term psychedelic is the only time it's mentioned. Shall there be a change to the Colorado revised statutes concerning legal regulated access to natural medicines for persons 21 years of age or older? In connection therewith, defining natural medicines as certain plants or fungi that affect a person's mental health and are controlled substances under state law. Establishing a natural medicine regulated access program for supervised care, requiring the Department of Regulatory Agencies to implement the program and comprehensively regulate natural medicine to protect public health and safety. And also creating an advisory board to advise the Department to the implementation of the program. In 2022, Delta County voted this way, 800, 8, 8,896 against, 6,482 for. I think it is incumbent upon the commissioners to take a good look at this, establish a moratorium up to six months, take these public comments, both written and verbal, and understand what it means for the health, safety, and welfare of Delta County citizens. I think the planning commission has done a very good start here in providing us direction on this. It'd be my recommendation to the commissioners that we do a temporary moratorium as outlined. And I would like to add, add some amendments. John? Could I see the printed copy of that? I closed my computer and it's kind of. Under the whereas is, I would like to make sure that we have a very definitive definition of a natural medicine, the psilocybin, psilocin, ibogaine, mescaline, and dimethyltryptamine. And then I would also like to add a whereas where it says, what this. And then I would also like to add a whereas where it says what this is not. This is not acupuncture. This is not other natural healing centers, yoga studios, tinctures, things like that. We got to be very careful that we do not step on existing uh, businesses that operate. As a natural healing center. Gentlemen, do you have anything else to add here?
Just for clarification, you're asking the proposed resolution to be amended and brought back to you?
We could do it conditional on those amendments.
I don't know if you would do it. I don't know the, the conditional would be, but if one of the commissioners makes a motion. Uh, to adopt the resolution, they can offer that as a, as a modification in that. The draft. So if there are modifications or amendments to that, they can just verbalize that in their motion. Um, and then authorize the, uh, well, authorize signature and I can go ahead and add those on once. I can, I can get a copy to you and sign it later if that's what you'd like to do.
I would. Gentlemen, it's up to you.
What is the resolution number going to be? I will make a, a motion that we adopt a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, number twenty twenty-five dash R dash eleven. Opposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing and approval of applications for the establishment. Of any business that cultivates processes or dispenses natural medicine. And the establishment of any business, occupation or operation of healing centers. With the amendments that Mr. Koontz recommended, the actual calling out of these um, of the psychedelics themselves. And making mention that this does not affect the other items that he mentioned.
I second that.
Any discussion? I think discussion, I would add, this does not affect um, unlicensed business operations or personal use at all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you, everybody for participating today. Please do send in your written comments. We do need to see those uh, as quickly as you're able.
When you're done, go ahead and say one comment. So I'll, I'll just uh, chairman and, and, or. Um, the comments today, of course, were on a public hearing in regards to the moratorium. But clearly that's closely related to any amendment to, any potential amendment to the land use code. So I guess I would ask uh, the, or court to the board to somehow get the comments. Capture the comments that were today and make sure those become part of the planning file. Or, or any potential amendment in future. Just make sure the records, record is complete. And then of course, anything that, as, as chairman, as you've mentioned several times this morning. Uh, any written comments or anything else would be routed, uh, because it's just so closely related to the concept of, of any potential future amendment to the land use code.
Right. And then at our April fifteenth meeting, I would like to schedule a work session. Hope you'd add that.
That should our executives say.
No, work session for the commissioners.
Is that open to the public?
Work sessions are always open.
Can we speak?
No. And that's not the work session day. That's just the scheduling of it.
Okay.
That makes sense?
So we'll, you'll announce it at a later date?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? We're going to take a five minute uh, break and at ten fifteen and uh, come back together for planning. Thank you. We're coming back on for the April first Board of County Commissioners meeting. It's ten fifteen. Uh, fifteen minutes late for planning. Please uh, give us a little space on that one if you would. I'll turn it over to Sean Gardner. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, good morning commissioners. Uh, we just have one short, small case that Brittany will present dedication right away and then um. I wanted to introduce you all to Angela Reed, who's our new community development technician. She'll, she'll be able to front the desk and um. Uh, Angela has family here in Delta County. She's got parents and a son, meaning they're already residing here. So they're moving out here to be family and. Um, she brings a lot of really relevant experience from her previous employment as a zoning and sanitation technician in Burnham County. In, in Wisconsin. So right away, very quickly in the interview, we picked up that she's going to jail really well, so excited to have her.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Pleased to working with you.
Alright, uh, so today for you, we have project uh, twenty-five dash zero one five, Mac Taggart. Uh, this application was submitted in two thousand and six. Uh, the project surveyor has reached out to planning staff regarding the road right of way dedication. Shown on the holder, Mac Taggart, already banked plat. That was recorded on March twenty-six, two thousand and seven. Um, it was, it was discovered that Delta County never accepted the road right of way um, for this plat. As such. Planning staff is presenting this project to the Board of County Commissioners for cleanup purposes on the above mentioned plat. And with that, um, it would like you to accept the dedication for the road right of way. For twenty-nine hundred road, um, totaling in one point five four acres as public road.
Questions for?
Just something that kind of fell through the cracks.
It seems as if that's what happened.
When was that plat originally produced?
Oh, it was in two thousand, thousand and six, um, and then recorded in two thousand and seven.
Other questions, commissioners?
It was a good catch, Dan.
I guess so, yeah.
And the property owners are aware of the right of way dedication and agree to that? How did this come up eighteen years later?
Digging into all of the research and discovered that the um, road right of way was never accepted.
You know, that's the problem with digging. When you start digging, you're always going to find dirt that needs to be cleaned up.
Was there not a signature line for the board in the original plat? Is that what was missed?
There was.
What would be the will of the board here, gentlemen?
Struggling to see a, a, a mount. Oh, there it is.
Five, four acres.
I move that we accept the project number twenty-five dash oh fifteen, the Mac Taggart Road Right Away. Dedication in the amount of one point five four acres as a public road.
I will second the motion.
We need to authorize chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
I will, I will uh, second the amended motion.
Any other discussion?
It, it may not make any difference, but this is a partition case. So this was a, this was a district court case. Oh, that's probably why that, that happened. It's out of the ordinary, though. Yeah, once every two, three years, we'll see a partition. That's, that's what they want them.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that plat ready to sign?
It is not, not yet.
Okay, please let me know.
Will do.
Anything else, uh, director from planning?
No, nothing else.
Thank you. Well done. And again, Angela, welcome aboard.
Happy to be here.
Is the weather nicer here than it is in Wisconsin so far?
So far.
Not inside.
I think it's just great.
You're my new best friend. Okay, we have county attorney at ten thirty. We're going to recess for nine minutes. Come back for, we need. Come back on the record. It's April first, uh, Board of Commissioners, um, county attorney, John Bear. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, chairman. Thank you, commissioners. I have one item for the board's consideration this morning. And that is the board's consideration of an airport ground lease for North Fork Valley Airport hangar number one seventy-five. And that's to CZI LLC. Um, little bit of history here. This is an existing hangar and an existing lease. Um, from, uh, the hangar was built in nineteen ninety-nine. It is currently under the name of Joel Ware. Uh, who's had it for, I don't know, for uh, probably about four years. Um. This is a situation where we have these older, older leases that are, uh, they, they've run there twenty-five years. And so we're taking this opportunity. To go ahead and to clean them up and get new leases. So that's why uh, this looks a little different than uh, the typical assignment. We actually have quite a few of these at North Fork Valley Airport. Uh, the board's probably already seen. Three of these and I've probably got a few more that we'll be working on this year. So, so in any case, this is a, a new lease on an existing hangar. Um, hangar one seventy-five. I will draw your attention specifically to um, in, uh, to provision or paragraph thirty-three, which is on the last page. Um, and maybe to the clerk and recorder as well, that I've referenced for a, a dockling purposes. Um, the four existing documents that are already on this hangar. Uh, so when this gets recorded, hopefully we can get everything tied together. So if someone looks in the future, they have a good snapshot of what the situation is with, with the hangar. Um, so other than that little uh, caveat, this is pretty standard stuff. And I would recommend the board uh, approve this and authorize the board to sign. And if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions, comments on this topic, gentlemen?
Nope.
I do not.
Uh, John, very good on the special provision with all the receptions. That's a very good idea. Thank you. So.
I move that we approve the airport ground lease, North Fork Valley Airport Hangar number one seventy-five. Uh, and authorize the chair to sign.
I will second that motion.
When we say to CZI LLC.
To CCI LLC.
Yeah.
I will second that motion, slightly amended.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Is there any other business to come for the board this morning?
No.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Um, we stand adjourned.